Well, once again, social media out there, good morning, afternoon, evening to you, whomever, wherever you at. I thank you, thank you again, for those that may not know me, if this is your first time viewing this recording, if you came across it on Facebook, I'm Pastor Teresa Vini and this is Soldiers on Fire for Christ Saturday Night Bible Study Session. With me, I will be your Bible study instructor for tonight. Some of the people are coming into my virtual classroom and we, God bless you, for those that will view this recording later and I hope and pray with all my heart that you get some tools that will help you and really hear from God through any of us as we are in this session together to sharpen one another so that you can continue to grow spiritually upright and strengthen your relationship with the Lord. But normally for me, right now, I want everyone to just calm down because all of us been running around and we're gonna enter into some praise and worship song. I'm gonna pray, play a song I was listening to earlier and just to get your, help you to get your spiritual wounds open so you can be ready to receive from God through us. So I decrease, so you can increase. Amen. So I want you to just relax, listen to the words. I'm always listening to words of songs because words are powerful. And I just want you to really embrace and just relax and then at seven o'clock, I'm gonna start. Next time after praise and worship, I'm gonna open us up in prayer and we're gonna listen and God is here and give you what he's giving me for my topic. And we all at Soldiers on Fire for Christ, the leadership team, we have new topics right now. So I'll be introducing minds in a few minutes. So relax, sit back, close your mind, free your mind up. Stop worrying about stuff, shut your brain off right now and just stay in the spirit realm and just, you know, relax. And I do not own any rights to any music that will be coming forth. Again, social media, everyone out there, virtual platform, I do not own any rights to any music that will be coming forth. Amen.
Amen.
Are you truly available to God? Listen to these words. Do you love them like that?
Gave me my best to reach out to man to show him your love and your perfect plan. You gave me my ears, I can hear your voice so clear. I can hear the cries of sinners, but can I wipe away their tears? You gave me my voice to speak your word, to sing all your praises to those who never heard. With my eyes I see your peace for more availability. I see hearts that have been broken, so many people to be free. Oh, I'm available to you. I will, I give to you, I'll do what you say you use me, Lord. To show someone the way when you make me to say. My storage is empty and I am available to you. Now I'm giving back to you all the truth you gave to me. My hands, my ears, my voice, my eyes, so you can use the best you can. I have empty out my thoughts so that you can hear me. And I'm free, I just want to be more available to you. Oh, I'm available to you. I will, I give to you, I'll do what you say you use me, Lord. To show someone the way when you make me to say. My storage is empty and I am available to you.
Please.
Bitch, they saying. She got big child, well, you no more. Oh wow.
Please put your phones on mute. Please put your phones on mute.
What they showing about your noodles? I ain't never liked noodles when I know why not.
Please put your phone on mute.
What's he saying?
A whole bunch of.
Put your phone on mute.
Prophet Sam. Put your phone on mute.
Put your phone on mute, whoever that is, we can hear your conversation. Somebody text her. We'll call. No quenching interruption of the Holy Spirit, but thank you. Hallelujah. We are ready. Are you truly available for God? Hallelujah, hallel- hallelujah. Woo. Okay, hold on. That's the end of it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for entering in this place or this platform. Everything was made by you for you and we truly, truly thank you, thank you, thank you. Amen, 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 amen. All right, our hearts and minds are clear. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I come to you again this time with my Soldiers on Fire for Christ family and my social media family, Lord God, as we are ready and prepared to use the tools that you've given me and use me however you see fit to be an encouragement to your people, Lord God. I decrease so you can increase in me and always let the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be acceptable in your sight for you are my strength and my redeemer. Let your people, Lord God, let their hearts, let their minds, Lord, let them decrease to receive, Lord God. Keep their ears to your lips. Let your word, whatever we do tonight, however you wanna leave this discussion, let it cut where it needs to cut, let it heal where it needs to heal, let it deliver where it needs to deliver and let it set free wherever it needs to set free within us, Lord God. We love you and we thank you for waking us up this day. But Lord, most importantly, forgive us right now for our sins. Mind, body and spirit, anything that we have done or said today or was a part of that wasn't pleasing in your sight, forgive us. Lord, help us, Lord, continue to be with us. We trust you and we are so honored that you trust us. Continue to grow us up, Lord God. Continue to help us to stay growing spiritually upright, Lord God, so we can help others to be spiritually upright, help them to grow. And for those that, Lord, that you are trusting us with to help us, continue to give us more patience, Lord God, more love for them, Lord God. And Lord, help them to always be willing to have an ear to hear and be willing to be teachable and be willing to accept constructive criticism because some of us don't want to be, it's a way to be constructively criticized, not harshly or being bitter, but to help us to correct each other in love. So Lord, have your way in and through me and on this platform in this classroom tonight and we give you all the glory and all the honor and all the praise for it in Jesus mighty and awesome name. And everyone say, amen, amen, amen. And it is done. Get your devices and your Bible. We're gonna deal with one topic, we wanna deal with one scripture today, but let me give you. As always, let the teacher get it up. Let me get my, let me get with me and God discuss my notes to give you my class topic. And for those of you out there, social media, as I said, Soldiers on Fire for Christ, the leadership team, where now God has given us for this quarter, new topics. So guess what the pastor topic is? Oh Lord. My class topic tonight is, why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? Well, I know that's a lot. I'mma say it again for you. Why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? So only tonight, we're gonna discuss a specific group of people, but hear me, social media, we're not excluding you. And for those of you that maybe, you know, you're deciding and you're trying to make up in your heart and your mind to get saved, I encourage you to get saved. I encourage you to get with someone or you could come over here and we'll get you saved. We'll walk you through the, to get saved, walk you through your salvation, walk you over that threshold and you and God gonna take it from there because you'll be doing this thing until he come get you or until he decides to bring you into his presence. Amen. So I do encourage you, you know, but right now, tonight, we're gonna talk about why are my people? God is saying, why are my people? And he knows who his people are. And some of you hopefully know who you are, but some of you are getting it twisted. Why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? Everyone go to Hebrews chapter four, verses 12 to 13. We're gonna deal with one scripture tonight and I'm gonna give it to you in the amplified and then I want someone to give it to me in two other different translations. Hebrews chapter four, soon after I finish, just unmute and go write for it in your different translation. If you have it up, just come forth and read. We wanna run it smoothly, so I'm gonna read it first in the amplified version. Hebrews chapter four, verses 12 to 13, the amplified version says, "For the word of God is living and active and full of power, making it operative, energizing and effective. It is sharper than any two-edged sword, penetrating as far as the division of the soul and spirit, the completeness of a person and of both joints and marrow, the deepest part of our nature, exposing and judging the very thoughts and intentions of the heart. And not a creature exists that is concealed from his sight. But all things are open and exposed and revealed to the eyes of him with whom we have to give an account." My next version. Nobody else have it up?
Okay. This is the C S B version and it says, Hebrews chapter four, "For the word of God is living and effective and sharper than any double-edged sword, penetrating as far as the separation of souls and spirit, joints and marrows. It is able to judge the thoughts and intentions of the heart."
That's 12 and 13?
Oh, 12, I'm sorry, I read 12.
Hebrews chapter 12. 12 and 13.
Okay. No creature is hidden from him, but all things are naked and exposed to the eye of him to whom we must give an account.
Amen. Next version.
King James version says, "For the word of God is quick and powerful and sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing even to the dividing asunder of soul and spirit and of the joints and marrow, and is a discerner of the thoughts and intents of the heart." Thirteen says, "Neither is there any creature that is not manifest in his sight, but all things are naked and open unto the eyes of him with whom we have to do."
Amen. Let the readers and the hearers of the word, of this word be blessed. Amen. I want y'all to soak that in from all those versions. Family, God uses the book of Hebrews to build a bridge between the Old and the New Testament. Hebrews quotes a wide variety of Old Testament passages to present a strong case for Jesus superiority over everything that came before him. God speaks clearly of the person and work of Christ and in this book provides us with a clear discourse on the need for a new covenant and why faith is so central to his kingdom. God acts as both an apologist and a visionary, convincing readers to change and move with him as he ushers in an age of grace. Here's some points I want y'all to ponder on and then I'm gonna lay out the question, but I want y'all to stay focused on Hebrews chapter four, verses 12 to 13. Here's some points to ponder on. Number one, leaders gain credibility when they suffer with those they lead. I'mma say that again. Leaders gain credibility when they suffer with those they lead. Number two, faith and vision are not options in good leadership, but necessities. Number two, faith and vision are not options to good leaderships, but necessities. Number three, leaders have the courage to go, to let go of the familiarity. Leaders have the courage, meaning you have to let go of those familiar things, have the courage to let it go of familiarity. And number four, Jesus is the ultimate example of a leader who paid the price to get the job done. So we need to continue, family and social media out there, to keep, to focus on Jesus because he's the excellent example, he is the ultimate excellent example of a leader who paid the price. You know, some of y'all are finding the cheap way of paying the price. Y'all wanna be negotiating with your gifts and talents. Some of you are watering down. He paid the price to get the job done. Question, verse 12 is one of, verse 12 is one of the most frequent quoted verses in all of scripture about the significance and the power of God's word. What stands out to you as most significant and why? Verse 12. Read verse 12 again to yourself and tell me what stands out to you as the most significant part of verse 12 and why? If I have to say it again for social media, verse 12 says, "For the word of God is living and active and full of power, making it operative, energizing and effective. It is sharper than any two-edged sword, penetrating as far as the division of the soul and spirit, the completeness of a person and of both joints and marrows, the deepest part of our nature, exposing and judging the very thoughts and intentions of the heart." Brother Bud and then Minister Rose and then Apostle Dabu, I hope I pronounced it right, in that order. And then Brother Tyrone in that order. Brother Bud?
Okay, I'd like to, that is one of the scriptures that's really spoke about a lot because when you read the word and the Holy Spirit's in our life, that gives us clear direction in which way to go and which way not to go.
So in verse 12, brother, so in verse 12, brother Bud, what stands out to you as the most significant and why?
Conviction, absolutely. I mean, I look at it knowing that the word of God will keep me in line. It's a conviction, the Holy Spirit in my life. That's what I always saw it as, the word of God is powerful. You know, I mean, it just transforms us. Yeah.
Verse 12 of Hebrews, that is the most significant thing about verse 12 is the conviction?
Yes, I would say, and wanting to do the right thing. Yeah, that keeps us in line. Powerful. The word of God is powerful too.
Next person.
Amen. I say what is talked about the sword. The sword can separate spiritual things as well as in the natural. When they talk about the sword, it makes me think about a meat carver, clean, you know, that's carves the meat away from the bone and all that can really just debone it. And that's what the word of God does to us spiritually. That's why it's so significant. It separates us. It goes in there and clean out the very sin that, and it debone or detach it from the spirit, praise God. And it's just that it's, it's remarkable how they compare it to the sword because the sword can get in there so deep and the word gets in our hearts and soul deep if we allow it to do so. Amen.
Amen. Next person.
Hallelujah. Praise God. It's good to be here again. Amen. Okay, I was meditating earlier on this same scripture and what came to my mind was actually the growing faith. So when you said the word of the Lord is quick and active, the method so deep. So I was saying, accept the word of God while it is powerful, okay? Focus on the word of God and remain in the word of God all true to the end. Why is the auto and the perfecter of our faith and the, the auto of our faith and the perfecter of the same rather? Okay, it is quick and active. Okay? And we look at ourselves, sometimes we fail or we fall, but the fall is not the end. So the power behind the word, when we fall, he jackles back. Okay, he brings us back. He has power to bring us back. For the righteous fall seven times. So there is power in this word that brings us back every time there is a falling, okay? And the glory of it is in our rising into the faith because it is the faith that quickens the word of God in our lives. And when light comes, now that is the end of darkness, no argument. When light comes, that mess give way immediately. So when light comes upon our hearts, which is the word of God that is quick and active now, that automatically ends every schemes of the devil immediately. And that is why we need revelations of the word of God in our spirit, in our heart. Okay, for the word of God is quick and active, you know, very quick and active. If everything fails, God won't. And this is how God began to show his power, he revealing himself in this very verse, okay? If everything disappoints, God will never. It's quick and active. If anything hand, God don't. Quick and active. So the next person I said, okay, this is more or less like a personality now. The next person after God is me before anyone because I have to follow. Nothing stand in between in order to experience the power behind it. Now, it has to flow from God to me, then to the next person that I'm witnessing to. So if it's not flowing from God to me, then I am not a witness. They say, and you shall receive power after when the Holy Ghost is come upon you, not them, you. So it coming upon me first, then I am a witness. Okay? So our heart must hit. Now, for the word of the Lord to be perfect, to be, to be quick and active, our heart must eat perfectly the word of God to produce adequate result because we are made to understand that the word of God is quick and active, very quick and active. So to produce the result we expect, okay, the result expected, our heart must eat the word rightly. So now, the meeting, the meeting now is to focus on the word. When we focus on the word, we actually truthfully and faithfully focus on the Lord because that is when we begin to experience the power of the Lord. Now, the Bible says in John chapter eight, verse 31, the secret is revealed in there. "If you, if you who believe in me remains in my word, then are you my disciples indeed." Now, the word of God will not just come demonstrating power when we are not meeting up the standard. Okay, it demonstrate power when the standard is being met. So the Bible says that the word of God is quick and active. So it means that we are the one to meet its standard. The word of God as, the word of God as its standard and the standard of the word of God is faith on the foundation of truth. Hallelujah. Okay, I just have to, to stop here, but let me say one more thing. That we need to meet up the standard of God's word, okay? It's simply a growing faith. That means we have to be renewed person. We have to be a renewed person every day in the word of God. When we are renewed, we break off the shells of unbelief and are exposed to the water, which is the revelation of the spirit of the word of God to activate the present faith needed to receive. For the word of God is active, is powerful and begin to tell us the things. Now, the Bible also says that nothing is hidden before it. Everything is open. Our heart, I can't see anybody's heart. I see nobody's heart, but the word of God sees everybody's heart. It's reviewed, it's open. And we also see in Romans chapter 10, in verse 17, the Bible says, "So then faith commend by hearing and by hearing," that is daily, 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 by hearing the word of God. Now, and the word of God is the catalyst that activates our heart to receive, to receive, to meet up the standard of God. Praise the Lord. So the word of God is quick and active. I meditated on this word and it was just a blessing to me. And coming up here again, I'm seeing the same scripture and this is just the spirit of truth spreading all across the world. Hallelujah. So I have to stop here. God bless you.
Amen. That was powerful. Next person and then Apostle Robin. I think it was Brother Tyrone and then Apostle Robin.
Amen. Praise the Lord. How y'all doing today?
Amen.
Yeah, it's powerful. I take the whole scripture to heart, you know, the whole scripture, you know.
What about verse 12? So to bring you back because he says something.
Yeah, verse 12.
What stands out to you as most significant and why?
What stands out is the power, the power of God's word and the two-edged sword, sharper than a two-edged sword, the word of God. Only it stands out to me because like, you know, my life, just say, I watched as I gave into the word of God, I watched it. You know, when you're a drug addict like I was, I was in the drugs heavy. I was in alcohol heavy. I was in, you know, a lot of sinful things like women and I watched the word of God take that desire away. It just cut it. I mean, even my friends I used to get high with, I used to get high with. It was like, Tyrone, did you go to, you know, could they go to programs? They, someone when I was smoking cigarettes, they would put patches on trying to stop the, stop smoking. But I just started praying. I prayed and I wanted to stop so bad, but I noticed it was because I prayed. I know immediately that day that I prayed, my wife would tell you, everything I prayed about and I wanted to desire to stop, it just went away that day. Not, no, it wasn't no week coming back or nothing. The day I stopped, I prayed about drugs, I prayed like this, I said, Father, God, you know, I really ain't had no faith. I really didn't know that God in my heart, all about the word of God, you know, he's the creator of the whole world. I never had that understanding, but my grandma always told me, taught me how to pray. And I prayed and I said, God, if you just help me stop smoking. Oh, everything I said, everything I wanted to stop doing that was wrong, this messing my life up, I prayed and that day it went away. When I woke up, I said, when I wake up tomorrow, Lord, Father God, if you stop, help me take this desire away. I never go back. I mean, when I smoked, when I prayed that prayer on drugs, it went away that day. My wife would tell you, I stopped smoking drugs. She days, oh, I was getting dry that much, you know?
Amen, amen.
I was so addicted to it. I was. I was so addicted to it. I was so, I could get high. I was so immune, my body was so immune to it. You couldn't even tell I was high. And then and alcohol. When I prayed that alcohol, you know how people can be, I I mean, I drunk or I drunk. I I was having coolers in my car drinking every day. That day I prayed, that day I prayed, and that next day I didn't drink anymore. My friends asked me right now, Tyrone, what did you do? You go to a program? I said, no, I just prayed. And and I and I really understood what it was doing to me. I I didn't like it when I was drinking. It would make me go to work late and make me not wanna go. I had hangovers. And I really didn't wanna lose my job, you know? And I prayed and God knew, and like you said, the word say, God knows your heart. He knows my heart. He and that tells you, he knows our hearts. You see, that's that's to be true. Only God can know and really know that I really wanted it and that's why he helped me. But I tell you, I know this to be true. Every time I hear scripture, well, just to have a little bit of faith. When they say have a little bit of faith, you can say to this mountain, and I had, I had just that little bit of faith. You understand? I understand that word of God. It's awesome, my friends. It's awesome to hear. It it it's great. It's awesome and everything. And it does, it does, the girl of God changed my life, transformed my heart every day, and it does have power. I'll tell you, the power of the gospel, yeah, I mean, it took the desires of women away. I mean, that was the last thing he had to do for me.
Thank you, Lord, for that.
Yeah, I was I was sad bringing women. I mean, I wanted to keep, I wanted all of them, but I couldn't handle.
Praise God, I'ma cut you right there, cause we live.
He taught me how to, that word taught me how to love. And you was awesome is now I I'm satisfied with one white. Cause the Lord say, when you find a white, you find a good thing. And I found favor in the Lord. See, that's awesome. And 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 that's the power of the word. And say amen.
Okay, go on. Amen. Let's move on to the next one, but that is powerful. And he got one woman in favors all over his life. Hallelujah. Apostle Robin Riley?
Amen. Amen. When I think of this scripture, um the words that sticks out to me is quick, powerful and sharp. You know, God's a word, you know, when I think of the word quick, that's some, it's an action word. And it makes me think of, you know, you you're running, you know, something that that is fast and and quick. And God's word will do what it said it would do. It's quick and it's it's powerful. Um, you know, it's just like medicine to us. So I think of that that power that the word has, you know, and his word is just, is just, is just good to us, you know? And when I think of the sharp, like the sword, you know, his word cuts when we need, you know, that sword, we
Can't hear you.
And and cut the enemy, you know, so that that's it's just really like those three words, quick. You know, we can use that that sword to cut the enemy. Amen. Praise God.
Okay, so y'all said a lot of nice things. Uh go ahead Apostle real quick. I see your hand up.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh uh what 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 our sister was saying, uh talking about uh quick, the 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 distance was just scared up in me. I remember sometimes where Jesus, sometimes they go in the Bible where Jesus enter into a man's house. And um the 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 people that invited him began to think in their heart. You know, they don't have to say it out. And they were just thinking, and here was the thought, that if truly this man is a prophet, as he claims, he will have know who this woman is. And 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 Jesus have to turn to him and said, now, written is taught. He said, I know who this woman is. Oh, God, that was very quick. That was a very quick one. And so many times, and Jesus looking at the man beside the 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 river, the pool, and immediately after I spoke to him, the man got up. This is very real quick and very active. And i- i- it it passed on to the apostles and everyone. The Bible says why they were going to the place of prayer and they saw a man, oh, 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 had been there begging. And they look unto him, say, silver and gold we have known, but there's something we have. And that is what we're about to give to you. They have the word of God, which is quick and active. It is in their spirit already. And they said, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, rise and walk. Now, because the word is so quick and active. Now, i- i- immediately, the man, they they have to assist him and i- i- he was up. Now, that was a man that has been caged with the power of the devil for years. Because the word of God is so quick. Hallelujah. So now, when we pray and have not received, this simply means that the faith we need to receive is yet to activate. Is yet to activate, because it most rightly hits the word of God. Hallelujah. And this is why our faith to receive is on a daily, that is growing faith, daily encounter with the word of God, which is the standard of God. Hallelujah. Now, the Bible says the word of God is quick and active, meaning it is yay and amen. Now, when it says quick and active, he is doing it, it's not that, okay, we expecting God to do it next week. Or God can do it next week. Okay, but not on our own belief that, okay, it should be next week that God should do this thing. No, the Bible says he's quick, it now, and now he can do it. Hallelujah. So now, we need faith to receive, because the word of God is quick and active, but we need faith to receive. And we need the word of God to have, we need the word of God uh to receive. And we need daily encounter with the word of God to activate the faith that the faith of the word of God. Now, this take me back to Hebrew. I I don't, I don't mean to take to 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 go from the 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 scripture, Hebrew chapter eleven and verse six. The Bible say, i- 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 without faith, in one word, no one receive. Now, despite the word of God that is quick and active, now without faith, it is impossible. It is impossible to to please the Lord. Now, and that means without faith, it is not possible to meet up with God's standard that releases the supernatural. Praise you the Lord, because this faith that comes must fit. It must fit or hit our hearts. The word of God is quick and active. It is quick and active, for they that come to God must first believe. For this faith that is, for this power of God, this word of God that is quick and active to work in our life as believers. Now, to activate, release the promises of God. Hallelujah. So this is just little things that hit from my, hit in my spirit and I can't just hold it. Amen.
Amen. But let's go deep. But that's all good and nice. We know that everyone, and I agree with everyone what they say. But for the topic to add on, and we've heard, we read Hebrews chapter four, verses twelve through thirteen. And we know that the word is quick and active and it's full of power and it's making it operative, energizing, it's effective. Like I said, it is sharper than any two-edged sword. It penetrates as far as the division of the soul and spirit, the completeness of a person and both joints and marrowes, the deepest part of our nature, exposing and judging the very thoughts and intentions of the heart. So why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? Why are God's people, and before you answer, and I'm talking about, I'm not, and it, and we're not always talking about exposure and the negative sense. Because some of you are hiding your gifts. Why aren't they being exposed? Some of you are not fully operative as you keep saying, cause the word is quick. When, and I'm I'm dealing, I wanna deal with those of us who say that we have been walking with God and we have a relationship with him over five years. So why are you so afraid to expose who you really are and who you are in Christ to the world? Why are you sitting on and why are you dragging your feet on what you know to be? What you should be doing or, and it's not, and when I say should be doing, I'm talking even within yourself. Not just going out here talking and running your mouth, just what you should be doing, how you should be living. Amen. Minister Rose, then Apostle Kim?
Amen. Um, I know before I I accept my calling and even sometimes not, it's because of afraid to fail, afraid to to disappoint God and not being able to to carry out what he has called me to do.
Amen.
So, um, you know, speaking for myself, not speaking for anybody else, I know that's what causes me. And I'm like, Lord, I had to, I be praying, Lord be telling me all the time, you can't afford it, but you pray, Lord. Lord, I need your help if this really what you want me to do. Please, I told you what you want me to do, but it's for that reason, uh you know, fair, fair failing. Amen.
Amen. Next person and then back to Brother Tyrone and then to Minister Isaiah. Apostle Kim?
Amen. Glory to God. I think a lot of it is like Minister Rose just said, a a fear of failure and also other people can't accept what God has put into you, so it makes you less motivated to move in what God has put in you. Based off of the response of other people, if that makes, amen.
Amen. But a lot of people didn't accept Jesus in his time. A lot of them did not accept.
Yes, a lot didn't accept Jesus.
According to who, and and he was who he said he was. He was called to do what he said he did.
Yeah, yes, but even though a lot of people didn't accept Jesus and he was called to do what he was supposed to do, a lot of us still look to people for the confirmations that are looking to God. That's what I want.
That's the thing. We need to continue to focus and look to God. And you have to learn to shut your flesh down, cause that's your flesh talking. Cause when God say yes, his yes is yes. He don't change that. If he said for you to do it, ain't nothing man can do about that. Man can't even change God's, God's decision, because guess what? If that was the case, none of us would be born. He knew us before he created. You you think he was, he would not create because of what man said? He's the creator. So we have to as leaders, for those of you who say that you have a relationship with the Lord, and not to try to sound harsh or whatever about it, but I'm just trying to take y'all deeper, even within your thoughts and self. You need to get up out of there. Get up out of that thing and stop thinking that you're not worthy. God called you for a reason. He created you. What makes you think that you can't get the job done? You're joint heirs with Christ. So get that, y'all need to get that thinking out your head. That needs to go and some of y'all been carrying that for years, thinking that. And then you wind up being with the go along, get along gang. Y'all appear joining organization, you just going along thinking, oh, this this will be good for God, you know? This is pleasing to God just to be low key under the radar. That's not what he called you to do.
Amen. And you gotta be free from public opinion, that is the problem. You gotta be free from public opinion, from trying to please people. Amen.
And gotta really believe in yourself. It starts with you. When you start, you believe in God and then when God shows you, you, you have to believe in yourself. How can you not believe in yourself, but you want under, you want others to receive the God in you? They're not gonna receive it if you don't even believe it. And some of you truly don't. I'm not talking to just my virtual, I'm talking to social media too. Some of y'all out here saying, yeah, I love the Lord. You don't really love him. Your actions show it. The Bible says you'll know them by their fruit. You don't really love the Lord. Look how you treat yourself. Look how you're living. Look at your lifestyle. Whether you're rich or poor, look at how you treat yourself. Look how you think. Think about what you think about. Think about what you say. Look at what you listening to. Look at who you hanging and connected with. But you want to be used by God. God is charging us twenty twenty-four. He's requiring more. We have to take this micros- this microscope on ourselves now. You gonna have to laser down and get into the crevices of you and allow the Holy Spirit to lift up and remove that residue so that you can fully be transformed and be spiritually upright and stop being spiritually crooked in certain areas. That's why you're wondering why you're not succeeding or you're not, you feel like you're not going far. Because like we just said, the word of God is quick. The spirit realm is quick and is active. When he's ready to move, you better be ready to move with him. But his people who are called by his name are afraid of being exposed. Why is that? All right, so I stopped there. I think it was Brother Bud Hand, Prophet is saying, Minister Isaiah, and a back to Apostle table in that order. Brother Bud? And then we're gonna go into the next question. This might have to pick up the next time I teach. Brother Bud?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Add it all. Uh, the word is, you know, Jesus said to the Pharisees, you look to the meat, you look to the word to find salvation. But I am the salvation. The relationship that we have with God sometimes can be hindered a lot by the things that we carry on in this world and the people and the things that we do. And it keeps us from having that power, true power. It's like he said, eat of my body and drink of my blood. And if you don't, there's no part of me. And it's literally spending time alone with God continually, getting to know him that when he says, no, this, you're quick. You're ready to get out of there quick. Or, you know what I'm saying? It's quick. It, I mean, it don't mess around. And like I said, but the cares of this world, it says, will tilt out the very life of God and because of the cares of the world. So a lot of that stuff and what we go through and the people that we hang with, sometimes that sortens us from the power that we have, because the word is God. The word is God and the word was God. It put on flesh and dwelt among men. So the word is sharp. He is true. He is pure. You know, and he wants us to be the same. So when we get away from the stuff that distracts us, we'll find out that the power comes out and we're able to stand up in the right way. Even no matter what it comes against us, we'll be able to raise our head up and say, that doesn't matter what you do. You know, I'm ready, you know? So I I just, I look there the way that.
Amen. I gave a order.
If the word was supposed to quicken the body so that you would be prepared to uh receive and your light would shine so that man could actually see that you're in the word. So when it came, you can like spiritually cut down things that are hindering you from getting to God. So if we're, we're in Christ, we take heed to the, to the word. Sometimes we fumble. Sometimes we fall. But it's our job to sharpen, sharpen our swords each and every day, which is getting in the word of God. You know, everybody, not twenty-four seven spiritually, but God would would love for us to be twenty-four seven spiritual. Because that's the only way we can become kingdom builders when we in tune with the word of God. So that's what quickens the body in Christ. Hallelujah.
Amen. Next person?
Next to me? Hey man, I'm if I'm getting it right, you say, uh, those are for spiritual gifts. So what what are we hiding for from? That's spiritual gifts?
No, I, the um, the um, my question was, when we were talking about uh verse twelve, I said, um, I I threw it in off of Minister Rose's uh thought. And I asked, so why are my people, which is our title, who are called by my name, afraid of being exposed? We read the scripture. We know it's quick and active. We know it expo- so, and I'm I'm telling y'all to think on, don't take, cause see, when we hear that word exposed, we always think it got me something bad. God doesn't wanna expose the bad stuff. He wants, he wants to use us, what, for his glory, but also to help one another and we to see ourselves like he created us. So I, so I want y'all to look at it from, yes, of course, um, there is always, when you're in a relationship with God, just like in a relationship, God protects his children. He not gonna just let you go out in your kind of way. He ain't gonna, especially in your right standing. Even though we are in this sin suit and like you said, Prophet is saying, we fumble the ball, we we make mistakes. He don't exposes the mistakes and and be like, nah, 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 look what you did. Look, everybody, ha, 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 laugh at my chat. He no, 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 no. I don't, that's not what I'm. Look, everybody, ha, 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 laugh at my ch, he know, no, 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 I don't, that's not what I'm talking about. Why are we afraid to be, to expose the goodness of the Lord to people? Some of you, y'all water down your, your testimonies. Cause you, you get, you, some of us get into our head, you know, we try to wanna do this elaborate, you know, um, it, uh, we wanna do this elaborate presentation of God. Serving God sometimes can get messy, but it's real, when people see the realness in you. Yes, they gonna see, they gonna see the glory of the Lord when you're in right standing, but they also can accept the realness that wow, he went through that, she went through that, and look how they came out. It, it takes time. Yeah, you gonna trip and fall, but be honest with you. So sometimes us, us older ones, five and older, where does we get off with this elaborate presentation all of a sudden? Why? You should be comfortable enough with your relationship to, with God to let him expose when he wants to use you and, and open you up. So that people can really see that God is alive and well. He took care of you. You was about, all of us was about to be up out of here. I'm quite sure all of us did a lot of things in our path. We supposed to be dead today. You ain't supposed to be here on this planet. You supposed to be gone. Ah, out of here.
I think.
You could have left you hanging up with the devil with the places where some of us been at. So now that we're out, now that we're clean, now that we are in right standing, how are y'all slipping into that mindset of being afraid? You are born to be set apart. You are, you should be alive and active, quick, like the word said, when God is, you should be quick. You ain't got time to play with no devils. We ain't got time to play with no devils. Y'all should already know how to identify the devil when he's working in people and even when he come upon you. Cause sometimes we do, you know, you have an attitude, okay, we take on the traits of the devil. When you don't wanna be bothered or you up here fussing and cussing people out, that's the devil way. When you're not, when you're acting the opposite of the fruit of the spirit. You should catch on quick and be like, you know what? God, I'm sorry, look, I, I, you know, I slipped, I slipped way into the flesh today. Help me get up out of it. I don't know why I'm just being mean to folks. At your job, they just irking my nerves, please, Lord, get these distractions. I just, I'm sorry. God be like, cool, you know? But don't, don't go too deep into the condemnation. Some of you, some of you beat up, y'all eat up on yourself when you make a mistake. God like chill. Y'all in a relationship, that's what he here for. So why is you afraid when we got God on our side? Cause guess what? The, the devil people, they not afraid. We already see that with a lot of stuff on social media, e, social, we see that they not, they real bold out here doing crazies, doing the devil's work. So why are you afraid to expose God and be like, yeah, I'm a child of God and what? I got peace, I got joy, this is just, and, and it's nothing, you know, you, it shouldn't even come out of you where you should be uh, trying to puff yourself up. You should already, it should be in you, you see what I'm saying? It's in you, we are the church. And God will love you no less. Cause you are his messy and all, sometimes. But he looks, he looks on the heart meaning, cause the heart, that's why he gave us free will. You in charge of that. You in charge of that. That was you in charge of that. And see, some of us, we wanna keep on passing the buck real quick. Well, we pray to God and what God, God like, that's not my area. In the relation, we're in a relationship. You have a part and I have a part. When a husband and wife, the husband has the husband role, the wife has the wife role. God has God role, you are his servant and the child, you have the child and the servant role. Some of you don't wanna take responsibility in your role. And that's why God, some things that you ask, or you wondering why it's not, because God is like, that's not my part, that's not for me to do. I gay, I, I, I wake you up every day. Now, your part is you make decisions on how you're gonna go about the day. Hey, and you want me to hang with you? I'ma hang with you, protect your family and all. But when you gotta make decision on what you gonna eat, what you gonna wear, who you gonna talk to, what you gonna listen to, when you on Facebook, when you out here. Oh, you don't wanna make those decisions. Not God. I don't tell you to go here and there, you make those decisions. You invite me to go, even if you go down a dark alley, God said, I'ma be with you, wherever you go, I'ma be with you, but you're the one makes, in the, in the final say of that discussion, you the one have to make the decision. Amen. I, I see the hands, but I forgot who's up. So, oh, it's Minister Isaiah, I think, then Brother Tyrone. Uh, back, back to apostle table and then, um, finally we're up, Miss, Minister, Apostle Kim must have fell off. Cause I saw her hands, she must have fell off, so hopefully she'll come back on in that board.
Thanks, sometimes when we are those people, we know our spiritual gifts, right? I think some of us still fighting flesh, you know our gifts, but we, we feel, we still feel like let's say exposed our spiritual gift, we still feel that doubt, like we still gonna be judged. So we still, some of us still got those growth. Even, even Peter, faithful as Peter was, when he ran and he denied Christ with time, he had a spiritual gift, but he still had, he still had to grow. And even people that spiritual is brief, we still growing at our own personal rate, you know what I'm saying? So I see why sometimes people with spiritual gifts, we, we fighting that flesh with it. So it's just, it's still a growth within. Saying, we still something, we gotta understand, we gotta trust God. Still gotta trust God, but it's still also the spiritual growth.
Next person.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes perfect sense, because yes, when you talked about Peter, yeah, Peter told God, I, I'm gonna, I love you. I'ma fight for you, I kill, I ain't, I ain't never leaving you. I'm, I'm be there with you, I'm, 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 we gonna, we gonna eat, sleep, we gonna ride together, we gonna die together. Jesus like, nah, you need to stay, cause you gonna deny me three times. No, I you know how we go. No, I ain't Jesus, he like, okay, we go, we shall see. We shall see. And then soon as he did it, what happened? He was like, oh my God. See, this is, this is where we go deeper for all of us. When I tell y'all, when you're out here, you have to hold people accountable to what they say. Even your family and friends, cause guess what? Test time gonna always come. So you have to discern the spirits rightly amongst your family members, your friends and your loved ones. If you're in relationships or married, don't say something you can't back up, cause guess what? Not only you hold them accountable, but God holds them accountable too. So that's why you hear me say over all of you lives in social media out there that we strive. Cause we'll never be perfect. We can never do nothing perfectly in this flesh suit. Well, now, when we are passed on and wearing the spirit realm, oh yeah. If you, the, the one, our family members that hope, you know, we prayerfully know that they are with God, oh yeah, they perfect now. Oh, they, 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 mm, point now, whether however eternity is until we get there. But as we're in these earth and suits, we have to continue to strive with the help of the Holy Spirit for perfection. But don't, but what God doesn't want us to do is keep homing in on the negative, on this flesh suit. Think about it. Trust me, I, I, I can almost imagine, and I tell God, I was talking, we talk about this. When Jesus came down and God put this earth suit on, came through the womb of a woman and, and, and was clothed in flesh, I know he was like, this stuff right here. And as he start growing from an infant to a child, and then when all, you know, with the brain that we got, cause remember God's ways are higher than that. He don't even think on our level. So let's put out, so for example, the brains, our intelligent level, let's say it only go up to level fifteen. So Jesus, of course, we know he's higher than that. So he's probably like through puberty and all of this, what is, he's like, he probably was praying every time, cause he talked to God, he was like probably in his private when he was away from, like, God, did the sin that contaminated this suit sends adamity? This stuff is crazy. These people, I, this thing itch. It's hurting. But I'ma, I'ma, but I, I'ma do my assignment. So he lived thirty three years. But can you imagine when you're in something that you're not used to have on and you gotta wear it for thirty three years now? And then perform an act for people that are so undeserving. Because within that suit, you know, that suit don't deserve it, but because his love is higher. He don't love on our level. That's why we need his help. So we should never feel like that we can't be, you know, of exposure when God wants to put you on his runway. You are his American top model. He need to let everybody see you. That's why he created everybody different, because to, for all of us, there is one, if you only get one soul saved, all of heaven is rejoicing. Cause like, you can get, yeah, you can have a hundred sheep, but if one go away and you go after that one, cause it's worth it, that soul is worth it. Y'all are worth it. Social media and my virtual class, you're worth it. So stop eating up on yourself in this season. I don't know why I'm feeling this so hot in the spirit. Some of you in your private, you think that you ain't worthy of what God has called you to do. He wouldn't have called you or made you if you weren't. He have a whole life, and yes, we all made mistakes and made decisions contrary to what God want us to do, but guess what? Each day that you get, you still have time to get it right. You, it's, everything is a choice away. You can say yes and you can say no. Don't let it be no great area. You have to keep, see, some of us, some people create a great area. That's how, that's what I'm saying. They start with the go along, get along and you know, I'm just gonna go along and get along in life. No. God can't work with you, you doing that. He be like, I, I can't get with that. And Jesus is petitioning like, man, yeah, when they, God just have mercy, don't, don't do nothing, cause I understand that that wave, you know, with that jump in, jump out game that they do, cause boy, when I was in that flesh suit, I don't know why, but they was just doing it, just, and you see, that's what he's petition, he's still petitioning while the Holy Spirit is like our God. He's meaning, he, he, like a guard rail, like, don't do that. See, Jesus petitioning and see when God looks at our heart and, and he can see when we about to make a monkey move, making a decision, whether it's dating people, being friends with people, just in within yourself, how you treat yourself. God, Jesus is saying, have mercy. The Holy Spirit trying to holler and warn you, look, don't be doing that. Stop thinking like that. Get yourself together, what you need to do. You need to run around the block or something, what you need to do, do what you need to do so you can get back focused. And one more thing, and then I'm gonna pass it to, I think it was, I don't know who, I think it was Brother Tyrone, then back to Apostle, and then back to, but she didn't come back on Apostle Campbell, then we'll move on real quicks. So we won't belate our, was only got a few minutes left. And that is, just like with Noah back in his time, you know, he, it never rained. So for him to be told to build an ark and it ain't rain, you know, he was jacked, he was like, you know, his, like, I'm, I believe God, I, I, I believe God. Him and God got, he's like, God, I believe your stuff, but you know, it ain't, you know, and his, he grew up, it was not no rain. So it's like, I'm trying to keep my faith, cause he's at a point of, I gotta see it to, I believe you, but the people, I don't know, they, they going. And so you know Noah drank. God, I believe God allowed you, look, long as, long as you do what I tell you to do. See, Noah had to be drunk, for real. Think about it. You, you gotta be drunk to, to build an ark. And you know, in the neighborhood, you've never grew up and seen rain ever. You know, people, you is off your rocks. So God, God preserved him. He like, I, I believe God probably told him on the side. You know, that those intimate conversations, look, you could drink all you want, long as you up all night building what I told you to do.
Wow.
And I'm gonna protect, and I'm not even gonna let that liquor tap your body. You know how alcohol? He's like, no, if that's what you need to shut the flesh down to make the flesh, you see what I'm saying? And you stay focused and don't go off what I tell you to do, I'ma preserve it. See, God uses like we are, we are, we are tools and he will allow certain things even when we make decisions that's not beneficial to our flesh. Cause some of us are doing things that's killing our flesh, like if we have bad habits or whatever. But in that particular situation, God allowed, yep, you could be drunk all you want, walk around neck and whatever, but we, we got a deadline, that ark better be done. Because at this time, I'm get ready, send some rain. And guess what? You know, Noah was on top of his game, cause he was like, huh huh, guess what? I'm get ready, drink this Hennessy right now, gee, cause this gonna keep me up all, woo, get wifey, get my Hennessy, cause this God is on the pop. They probably thought he was crying, yeah. He thought better, he was like, I know what he said, I wrote down the numbers. This ark, I got about, I got twenty more days to get it done. We gonna get it done, cause we gonna be out of here. God get ready, destroy the earth. See, he ain't care about being crazy, but if that's what he needed to keep his flesh from not being distracted. Because you know, if he was sober, he'd have been like, slow on it, he'd have been like, mm, I don't know. I mean, I believe God and stuff, but uh, I'm just gonna go chill right now. I'll work on it later. Something about that liquor, Noah got to work. If you, if you really go deeper into, Noah got to work and thank God that he did, cause guess what? Life started with him, you know what I'm saying? God did what he had to do, he destroyed, and he off up his belief. But what if he took a moment like some of us do? And we be, we have the delayed disobedience. Cause disobedience is disobedience, even if you delay it. When God tells you do something at a specific time and then you like, I'ma do it tomorrow. What if he didn't give you tomorrow to do it? See, you'd have been, you'd have died in disobedience. Just something to think about, why my people who are called by my name, why are they afraid of being exposed? I think it was Brother Tyrone, Apostle Table, and then back to Brother Bud. And then we gonna wrap it up.
Amen, amen, amen. Well, well, people, I'm not afraid, you know, I think about.
Oh, we don't, you wait, you just, you stripped me off, praise God, I thank God for you, just so you're still here.
I'm gonna tell you why I ain't afraid. Because I was out in the, I was out in the world, my friends. I, I was out in the world doing a lot of crazy stuff and I wasn't scared then.
Exactly.
I, when you, when you hang around drug dealers and drug users and drug sellers and guns and all that, you ain't afraid to go. And then now that I know the living God, now that I know that he's more powerful. And he's again, he, can't nobody stop him from doing what he wanna do. When he exposed these things to you, cause these things are, I mean, when I was doing these things, how, how, how I understand it now, what they does and what, what they are.
Mm-hmm.
I'm telling you, the word of God exposed it, right? He said, they exposed these things, cause we are walk, sometimes, I know I was ignorant. I was ignorant to the things I was doing. Come on now. I was really ignorant, cause I mean, the way I understand it now, drugs and, I go, why was I self-destruct like that? How come now that I feel so much to love myself as God showed how great, how, who I am? Who I am as a human being that was created mold and in my mother's womb by the living God. Yeah, this truth is exposing who I am, not what I was. And I tell you the truth, my friend, I can never be afraid to walk this walk now, that I know the Lord is on my side, the, the creator of all things, to create everything in the whole world. Created the whole moon and stars and the sun. Come on now. This God is awesome. Our God is awesome. The God that I serve is awesome. And I'm not afraid to serve him. I'm not afraid, and what's awesome is, my friends, as I used to live in the world, as God exposed the evilness and stubbornness, selfishness of my heart, what was of my heart. And now that I love God, I love the Lord. And I know he said, if you love me, you do what I say. If you love me, you say you love me, but by your action, you deny me. See, I, I ain't saying by my actions, I'm denying him, but I know that I can't live that life. I can't let my action not deny my love for God and I say I love him. And I'm telling you, my friends, I do love the Lord and I do know that God, I believe in him all day long. Because it changed my life for the better forever. And I will always go find him as he showed me the way. As he showed me how to speak, as he showed me through his spirit, through the spirit of God, and I know that these are not my words. I know, my friends, when I used to walk in the flesh, when I walked in the sinful nature, when I went to school to try to learn, it was hard for me to learn, cause of abuse, the, the trauma that I had in my head. But well, come now, I can remember the gospel, I can hear the spirit speaking to the churches, and I am the church of the Lord.
Amen.
I can hear, and I, and as I'm speaking now, I, I, I can tell you, I can give you scriptures as, as come to, you know, as the Holy Spirit ministered to me, and when the time come, see, like he told Moses, just to go and I will be with you. See, I know the scripture. He said, just go, and now he telling me the same thing, just go. And, and the time that you go, wherever you go, I would give you what to say, I would show you the way, what to do.
Amen.
And I'm telling you the truth, my friends, these truths, this, this is life is, is powerful. And I know that, when, when, when I know that God is being pleased, where he's showing me that I'm being obedient. See, it's awesome when you can please the Lord, you know, you pleasing the living God, when you know you got a chance to please him and please him and really, to really consider, see, I take all. To please him and really, to really consider, see, I take all his, all his words to heart. He said, when he was telling the prophet, I consider that righteousness, what, what Abraham and Isaac did, I consider righteousness. And I said, Lord, what I'm gonna do, and you going, in my heart, as I do the will of the Father. He consider how I love him wholly and righteous.
Cause it's righteous.
It's right, man. That, that's the way I want him to. He showing me the one, he showed me how to love. And I must love him the way he showed me. And I know that I'm blessing him, not cursed, not, not grieving his spirit. When you know the Lord is real, he can see all things and you understand this mode, come on now, you came, you came. He say, I'm giving you this, I'm exposing this to you and you gonna travel over. See, I know that I can't travel over, cause the Lord, oh Lord, oh Lord. Will he hold me accountable? Will he judge me more harshly? Yes, he will. I know he will. Cause I love him and I do love him. I, I know who he is. I fear the Lord. I fear the God of the world. I know he's real than anything I ever imagined, anything I ever got to know in this world. Everything I got to know in this world is no great, nothing so powerful in love. No more power and to destroy and then the living God. Nothing can, can help you to, to stand strong and, and die for what's right now. See, I'm telling you now, I can live this life and suffer for the gospel, cause it's like Paul. See, when you get a scripture, when Peter say, I, I, I fit, I'm made fit worthy to suffer for the gospel. See, you gotta understand, my friends, as I lived this holy life, and if I come to suffer. Greater my reward and the love of God will be all rewarded in my heart. I get to suffer for doing what's right, not, my sins that I was once sinning, I, I deserved it, you know. We, our sins, we getting without his sins deserve, you know? You understand that. We get without deserve. I understand that now. But now, with the reward I would get for doing what's right, I rather die and suffer now. I would die for this cause now. And I love to, I love to come over here and bless you all.
Yes, you do bless us. Amen.
Bless you all, I'll tell you, I come to bless, not to curse.
Yes, you do. Amen.
And given what he given us in our hearts. Where he given us in our hearts, creating us a clean heart and a right spirit. What's in your heart, your mouth speak? What's in your heart, the Lord would put in your heart, when he creating you a clean heart, you give out the world what the Lord give you. Yeah, I'll tell you the truth, my friends. I was, I was lowering my own eyes. I was, I was one of those guys that didn't think highly of itself. And people treated me like I was just crazy, just nothing, you know? I, I didn't get no, the only thing time somebody was saying something good to me when I played basketball. Oh yeah, brother Todd, good. Brother Todd, good. See, that was, that was the basketball. I'm talking about all the other things. I felt low in my own eyes, but the Lord did lift me up and now I glorify him. Just like he told King Saul, you, you was once small in your own eyes, but I. Oh Lord, thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Amen, amen, amen. Apostle Dabu, you been waiting patiently?
Praise God. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. I know, get your thoughts. You gonna, after this, we gonna wrap it up. I'm gonna let you hear the last four.
To, to, this is, this, this question is more, more personal to everyone. And I will speak personally and of the encounter. This is it. Few questions that came to me, why are, am I not representing us? Showing the, the goodness of God as I ought. Manifesting him and, uh, to the world and. Okay, first of all, at a stage, this is what I began to battle with. And these are questions that comes to my, my heart. When these things happened. And number one question is, have I received power enough? No, the, the level I, 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 I have, I am, is, is it, is it? Can I continue with my own strength? Okay, can I depend on what I, I, I know myself? Or are, are I tired enough until he showed up? Okay, did I just tired for few minutes, few days and just run out to the field and start doing what? What I see, what I read as testimony? Okay, have, have I been instructed? Or have I, have I heard what I need to hear? Have I seen what I ought to see? Like Apostle Paul, he had to see, you know, he, he, he saw the Lord, he, he met with the Lord. And, and everything just changed, everything changed. So I, 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 I came to know that when we see the Lord, e- everything change. Everything changed. So if I have not seen him, then I, I might still be having fear. In me not to do certain things. Okay, and if I should go on just false assurance or there, on, on people's convictions. Without meeting with him, I, I will still not flow. That, to flow will be difficult for me. Okay, and the next question I asked was, am I ready to die? Because thi- these are things that keep coming that I know that can stop the flow. Can stop the flow of me being a witness. Am I ready to die? Okay, and I, I saw, the, at the time, the, the apostles were coward at the time. They were still much alive in themselves. They could make promises in the flesh. But their spirits, the, the, in the spirit, they are, they are, they are not dear. Okay, because the flesh is just making these promises. I, I think when Pastor, um, Teresa was saying. Peter was making promises, I, I will die for you, I will do this, I will do that. And, and Jesus have to rebook him. Okay, because this is flesh at work. He is not dead yet. He's still very much alive in himself. So I, I look upon myself. Whenever, whenever I'm still much alive in myself, then I cannot do. I cannot do nothing. Now even the words that I ought to speak will not come, because I'm still much alive in myself. There is still part of me that is, that is speaking, that is alive, that need to be dealt with, that need to be crucified. Now, these are things that is restricting me from being a witness as I ought to be. It's restricting me from the powers I need to demonstrate. It's restricting me from the glory of the Lord I need to bring upon the territory. Because I, I am still very much alive in myself. And here is what the scripture says in John chapter twelve and, and verse twenty-four. The Bible says, Jesus speaking, verily, verily, I say to you, now this is me. He said to me. He said, accept a corn, which is me, accept a corn of wheat falls into the ground and die. It abided alone. So this is very clear to me. Oh, I, I begin to see, this is why I can't do nothing. Okay, this is why there is no flow of the spirit. This is why I'm, I have a shortage of power. Because as, until I die, until I die to myself. Okay, I see Apostle Paul was saying, okay, I die daily. This, I die daily in order for the life of Christ to continue in him. Because he knows as long as he's still in the flesh. Now the flesh is lost in after the spirit. He's fighting after the spirit for the spirit not to do what it's, it ought to do, because the flesh is always against. It's only, it lost pleasure, it love the, the, the things of the world and all of that. So in order for, 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 for the spirit to comes alive, then the flesh need to die. And Paul realized this secret, I said, he died daily. So I look upon myself, I have to die daily. My, the, the one I had yesterday is not enough to carry today. It's not enough. I don't have to deceive myself. It's not enough. Okay, and the Bible said, give us these days our daily bread. So if I feed my body today or yesterday, now today I'm going to be hungry. So in order for my spirit to be alive, then I need another daily bread for my spirit. And man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word. So I need to hear, I need to see. There's need to, there's a need of an encounter every day. Okay, I, I think that is too much. Every, every second, every minute. There's need of an encounter. So I look upon myself with all this question, why am I not flowing? Okay, there are times men love for power to do certain things in the kingdom. And we don't even realizing that this power is inside, but there is something that need to be done for this power to make manifest. So I began to think about these things, how can I go about these things? To the glory of the Lord, I remember a time that we pray for a sick people and they were here, I was like, wow. Is this how it is? Now that is the level of how, how dead I am at that time. But in another time, we might pray and they will not get healed. Why? I, now, at that, that particular day, I'm not dead. The, the flesh is at work, maybe it, it has run to my mind, maybe because of the previous testimonial, it run to my mind. And now it's restricting the flow. It's restricting the flow. And Jesus said, until we eat falls to the ground, until I. Tybo falls to the ground and die, he said, I remain alone. The power cannot flow. I, I just remain alone, for if it die, it bring forth much fruit. Oh, it speaks most to me. If I die then, his power can be, it can spread. There is no, there is no boundary to the power of, of God, like we read in, 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 in Hebrew, chapter four, verse twelve. For it is quick and active. So there is no stopping, there is no restrictions, but until. Until I die. So if I don't die, I remain alone. So these questions I ask myself, have I tired enough? Am I ready to die? Okay, I, I'm, I'm still, am I still not looking at the things of the world? Okay, am I still not getting destruction? Okay, now, in, in conclusion to, to, to all these things is. I know I've been justified by faith. I know. Because I receive the Lord Jesus Christ, I have been justified by faith, and I was sanctified by, through the blood. Okay, I have. Then that is not enough to be a witness. That is not enough to be a witness, until I go into or onto Pentecost. Until, and that is where I die. Not until I reach Pentecost, then I, I, I'm still alive very much in myself. So these, all these things are what I, I, I realized for myself. That I'll stop me from manifesting the, the, the power of God as I ought. Things, so when I tired now, I, I, I know what to tired for and how to channel. What I begin to ask and the desires of my heart, from the earthly things to the, to the, to the heavenly things. Not that, that he will come and, and, and purge me of everything that is stopping me, which is self. So I know, uh, in one word, flesh, flesh and self has been the one that stopped me from manifesting the flow. So when that is dealt with, then I begin to see the power of God at work. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. But Apostle, I wanna say this to you, cause you mentioned something before, I forgetting them. Brother Bud, I'll get to you. Um, you said that for you that, um. You know, sometimes you wonder, like you, you know, you can see someone get healed and then the next time. You know, through you, they may not get healed, or you, you may think that, oh, what did I didn't do right or what I didn't do? Well, let's look at it from this perspective. It's not, sometimes it's not even nothing you did. Because guess what? If the receiver is not in right standing or in position to receive healing, they're not gonna get healed. All your prayers will hit the ceiling and hit the floor. Your anointing will hit the floor. You can lay hands on as many people, because I've done, yes, and I've had that battle, that conversation with God, like, hold up. You know, I, I, you know, I prayed and I've been with this person and I seen them get healed, whatever. And then I meet another soul and they going through this, and I know that you're healing power, but, but guess what? You, like you said earlier, we can't see each other's heart. And so. The people that we pray for or, or God allows our path to come, if they are not really susceptible to be spiritually open to receive it. A lot, and you wonder why, oh my God, they, you hear something, they passed away? Because we don't know, first of all, what they were doing to the body? Were they even, if it was medication, were they taking their medicine right? You know, cause we know, it's the spirit by his, we are healed. You're already healed, but if they don't believe on the level that they already healed. They won't make decisions for the flesh to get it in a company with the word and with your. When you're, when people are in the presence. So don't be hard on yourself or disappointed when. Some will, you know, some may get here. It's nothing you're doing. If you are in right standing, or some may get, cause it, it, we already know that. God wishes for nobody to perish, but everybody is not gonna get it. Cause see, we, cause the whole thing is. All of humanity, what do we all have in common? The freedom to choose. Even God, even the devil's children have the freedom to choose. Cause see, they can choose not to be with him, but they choose to be. You see what I'm saying? We're trying to show them it's better with God than with him. You know, but see, no matter what, at the end of this life, it's still a choice up to us. It's not up to God to make that choice. See, God is not a bully God saint. He didn't put in us to make it seem like I'm gonna make y'all worship me and praise me. No, I'm gonna put in you the ability to choose to whether you're gonna worship me or praise me. You're gonna, you're gonna ask me to come into your house. I'm not gonna force my way in. And so when I use you to pray for people, lay hands on them. If they don't get the transference, that's not your fault. Don't think it's nothing that you did in your office. It's not. Because something, it could be always either their decision, cause it's how they receive it. Because you're the giver out, you're giving the gift. If they don't unwrap it. If they don't accept it, if they take all of that, that you are in right standing giving, and they put that gift on the shelf. And then their life go on, you know, they may live another day or two and then all of a sudden, up they gone. Because you have impacted, the gift was packaged for them. This was your healing, but you choose not to open it up. And a lot of people do that. And it has nothing to do with you or, or here go the flip side, we go deeper. And when you're working in your offices, the receiver could have art against you that you don't even know. Some people, you, some people have, like we said, we can't see people's minds and heart. Some people can say on the outer, I love you Apostle, you man, but inwardly, they got another ulterior motive. Someone to just get close enough to you, thinking that they could, cause we know spirits jump. They wanna snatch your anointing from you and thinking that will kill you, or you're not, you're gonna be less effective. You already know, that ain't, that ain't, that is not gonna work. Cause God, you answered the call, so you'll never be less effective, as long as you continue to strive to be obedient unto what God said. You'll always be effective in what you do. It's just sad that as us leaders. When we encounter people regardless of the connection or how we know them. And we given, we, we, we give, we're in the spirit realm with the Holy Spirit doing what God says, and they just walk away. And don't take you seriously. And we can discern it, cause it hurts me all the time. And I gotta. Shuck it up like a big girl. Cause I've talked to many people and I can, and once we hang up the phone or even come from FaceTiming. I can, I, I can sense like, yeah, they believe some of what I say, but they don't take it real seriously. And then I have, I have met people that, yup, I gave a word God said about their life, they didn't straighten up and guess what? They was out of here. God got tired, or they was in a situation and they may have lost their, you know, job, whatever. Thank God, just start stripping, cause he's like, you, cause God looking at the heart, they unappreciative. I sent you the help. You gonna reject the help. He, you, you were, you're healing hands. I sent you healing hands and you're gonna reject the healing, but you say you love me. Your heart is far from me. So never take it on yourself and think that you're not effective. You know you in right, because you know you have a relationship with God. See, it's a difference knowing God and being in a relationship. And we gotta help people to understand that. Yeah, you can quote scriptures all you want. I tell you. You can, so what, it's cute. You think it's cute, cause you can quote from Genesis Revelation, but is Genesis and Revelation? A part of your atmosphere? Are you Genesis and Revelation? Are you striving? Is that, that should be in your skin, like that in your flesh. People could see it. They'll see it. No, you ain't gotta be all glamour dressed up, but they'll see it, even when you relaxing. You could be relaxing, watching your favorite show of football. Oh, that's a man of God relaxing. That ain't no street man. That ain't no, you know, that's a man of God sitting there in his house or on his, enjoying this, enjoy, relax. Just like Jesus. They knew who Jesus was sleep on the day, on, you know the story when he rebuked the sea and you know. But on his downtime, he was still anointing, he was resting. He, cause he can cool, he can do that. God don't have a problem with us relaxing. But I don't, don't ever think you're less effective. You're more effective when you're in right standing, but it does hurt as a leader when you can discern the spirit. That people don't take what you saying seriously. And then when it get to a point with something real bad. And then when it get to a point where something real bad, then they running back. And you, sometimes you wanna say, why you ain't do with the word I gave you to do? Now you wouldn't be in this. Now the situation, I told you, I gave you the word, I told you how to navigate through it, nah. You said you love the Lord, I get, you say, if you, if you, if that, if you don't trust the Lord and me, then why is you wasting my time? That's real talk, all of y'all. But see, we still gotta discern rightly others, and God swear, you gotta discern yourself, gotta be honest with yourself, what are you doing this for? Why are you saying you love the Lord, but you really don't wanna help people? Why are you saying you love the Lord and you don't wanna really pray for people? Why are you saying you love the Lord, you keep running to a building in a church and sitting up there every Sunday wasting your time, and you ain't paying attention? You just staying, you sitting up there for the music and then saying hallelujah, I love the Lord, you don't love him. Cuz soon as some people have been in church all their life, and their lifestyle has not changed. Some of them have been in church from seven to three o'clock, and here it is, my thing is, and it goes deeper, let's go deeper, and then I'm gonna wrap it up. How can you be in the presence of God from seven to three o'clock? And then once you get out of God's presence, and you know the problems that you have in your life or in your home. You don't feel the need to change anything. When we know we just said, the word is quick and active. If the word is quick and active in you, and you've set up under that umbrella, so for example, I'mma use this. So you know that you are like Brother Tyrone, okay, you got a a a a drug problem. You've been in the presence of the Lord from seven to three o'clock. If you are truly in the presence of the Lord, when you come out, you can be like, you know what? Uh, this is it, God help me, and guess what, like he said, it was quick. He put it down, for some of you out there, even social media, you should be, you should be like, you know what? I'm done with this, I'm getting rid of him, I'm getting rid of her, I'm good, you, all y'all get up out my house, y'all gots to go. Y'all gotta go, I ain't taking care of nobody, I ain't taking care of no grown folks, y'all got twenty-four hours to get with you. No more of this, I ain't gonna have nobody sleeping in my basement, fornicating, bringing their girlfriend smoking weed, y'all gots to go. Y'all gotta go, my house gotta get cleared up, they gonna think you crazy, but some of y'all. But then here y'all, here go the, here go the enemy pull on y'all, but that's cousin Bobo, he don't have nowhere to go. You didn't birth cousin Bobo, and even if you did birth him, he doesn't belong to you, he belongs to God. He is a grown man, and he knows how to make his choices, you, he should not be living in your basement. And here it is, you go to work every day, and he eating up all the food, bringing all his friends over. And you thinking he cool like that. God blessed you with a job, he he provides for you, food, clothing, and shelter, and some of us allow people to take, and family members. To take advantage of that, even our children. Some of y'all got grown kids living with you that are not doing right. But you make excuses for them in front of people, so cuz you wanna dress up your lifestyle in front of everybody. So it goes back to the question, why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? Cuz see, if you're really working on your relationship and love walk with God, it's no way in the world you can be in the presence of the Lord. And don't wanna get your life right, you don't wanna get your atmosphere right. It's no way, so that means you ain't been in the presence of the Lord, you been in the presence of some devils, ain't no way. Ain't no way you can sit here and say you've been in the presence of the Lord, then next you know you wanna sleep with your neighbor's wife, ain't no way. Ain't no way, you should, you shouldn't even be thinking, you you won't think like that if you're really in the presence of the Lord. Ain't no way you sitting here being, saying you're in the presence of the Lord, but then you cuss your sister out, or you backstabbing your friends. Or you plotting a plan and hurt them, ain't no way. So we gotta check ourselves before we continually be wrecking ourselves. Amen, any last thoughts or comments, two minutes, and then I'm gonna wrap it up with announcements and prayer. And I thank y'all, social media out there, those that will view this video later, my virtual classroom, those of you that has hung in. And I didn't mean to go over, cuz I'm done with, this will be a part two. Um, that we're gonna go into the next time that I teach, because the Holy Spirit really wants us to get into. Because he's wanted, cuz we're at the end time, and he want us, if you're saying you're gonna be ready, then you need to know you gonna be ready, ready. Without a shadow of a doubt, you will not be moved on your readiness for your heavenly Father, to be prepared for him to come back. Oh, you gonna have your house ready, yup, geez, yup, you gonna, you be standing on the porch, however it come, ready, we ready. If he come out the cloud with a big old bus, we gonna be on the porch, we ready. We ready, no if ands or buts about it, God, you know, you see our heart, yup, my heart, we ready. And I know all of y'all gonna be ready. Amen, Brother Bud, I see your hand up, um, Minister Isaiah and Brother Tyrone, if all y'all hands, but I ain't know, but but go in that order. Two minutes, and then I'm gonna close this up.
I'm gonna start early with it. Uh, for anybody that sees the replay on this, I'll tell you what, this is one of the best teachings. You could ever possibly hear. And people pouring their hearts out, and saying, hey, I wanna be better, I wanna do better, I'm going to do better. Because I wanna make sure that I make heaven and not hell. I, this blew me away, you answered every question. You know, one thing is, real quick, when you talked about healing, and the other person wouldn't wanna be healed. When Jesus came to the man who was thirty-eight years, I think, crippled or forty years, I forget. But he was crippled from that long, and all of a sudden, they had the pool at Salome. Where people at certain time of the day, the angels would spill the water, it says. And he said, well, you know, I've been trying, Jesus said, you want me to be, you wanna be healed. And he said, well, I can't get any, you gonna carry me and put me in there, because out the time I go, I get stamped on. He said, I asked you, do you want to be healed? And all of a sudden, he felt the, the power and the strength through his leg that he never felt all those years. And he said, do you want to be healed? That was good, because if people don't believe, or they don't during somewhere else, no matter how much you're prayed up. If they don't wanna receive it, they won't get it.
Minister Isaiah, Brother Tyrone.
But Bud pretty much hit on what I was, what I was gonna say.
That means we all on one accord. We all on one accord, he loves it.
And when the brother was talking about healing, and sometimes it didn't work for him, remember Christ said, when he healed people, he told him, said, your faith heals you.
And that's true, cuz think about it, when Christ, he was only here to thirty-three years, his ministry was three years, you think he, he, everybody, look, what. Wherever he was at, whoever was there, and if they got it, they got it, but he was not, he was like, look, he wasn't chasing behind folks. No, that's not what he was doing, he did what God told him to do, he had a mission. Those of you who got it, y'all got it, booyah, outta here, next village. It wasn't no all that chasing folks, nah, you you're faith, like you said, off your faith. And just like those certain stories, like the woman with the issue of blood, he knew, he was like, she, oh, she wanted. Cuz I felt that, that virtue, I hear it is people bumping into me, but her pers- her specific touch. It was like, who who touched me? She touched him in a specific way that was unfamiliar from all the other touches. Because it, like he said, she she wanted, she she had that much love, she was determined. She was determined, and she let nothing, she didn't let no distractions, she ain't let no family, she ain't let no job. Distract her from getting what she know she was gonna get from God. Guess what, we can still use that, because some of you allow distractions, allow people. To get, for uh for you to not get what you need from God, cuz you you're, you put too much focus on them, and they get in the way. Not just for healing, but period. Some of you should be at a level, God wants to use you at a level, whether it's in your your job area or whatever, but you allow your own thoughts. People and family to get in the way, so you don't excel. How determined are you to get what you know God got for you? You don't let nothing stand in the way, you don't let no devil stand up in your way, blocking you. Where you going? Oh, you trying to get to God? No, you not, I'm blocking. And then some of y'all give up, y'all be like, sorry, I ain't even gonna fight today, stop being a punk, don't be scared of the devil, push him out the way. If God said it's for you, some some things you gotta fight for, you gotta bring the fight. Get that outta here, you ain't gonna stop me. If God is for you, then who can be against you? And he meant that in his words, something for us to think about, if I am for you, and I got, and all of heaven is for you, what are you afraid of? Amen. I seen a hand, well, who was, who was the last hand?
Amen, amen. Just remember, my friend, they say, if you resist the devil, he will flee, if the word of God says that, he got it. Remember, the devil gotta obey God, this word say that, resist the devil, he will flee. If he, if the devil see you resisting, he gotta go, he can't be, he can't keep, he gonna look for an opportune time, but. But I tell you, listen, my friends, take this to heart, this is the Holy Spirit. God's strength is made perfect in our weakness. You gotta listen, my friends, wherever you weak, don't be afraid, don't be afraid to announce to God, because his strength is made perfect. He have to fix you, he have to fix you, that's why Paul was saying. I I love to boast about my weakness to God, because his his strength is made perfect in me, in my weakness. And I tell you, my friends, I I I, when I do, if I say something wrong out my mouth, I do something that, that I know that ain't 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 in the Holy Spirit. I say, Lord, I need Father, I need you, I call him Father now, I say, I say, Daddy, I need you, help, help me. His strength is made perfect in my life, so I know he do it in my life, he do it for all the human race. Oh man, cuz I was one of the worst of sinners. Amen.
Amen, thank you so much, Brother Tyrone. So again, thank y'all for joining me tonight, come back next Thursday for the prayer call. Guess what, I'm gonna be the prayer facilitator, oh Lord, again. Thank y'all for praying for me, cuz I'm going through some, we going through some stuff, you know, in my body. But I trust God, it's it's just no doubt about it, I'm glad I don't look like how I feel. This ain't nothing but God, nothing but God, cuz sometimes when I tell people what up, they be like, you, you, how's you dealing with all of them? I said, praise the Lord that you don't see inwardly, you know, cuz God sees inwardly what I'm going. See, God protects his children, cuz he ain't gonna let you look like no fool, especially when you gotta go up against devils. Oh nah, he gonna equip you up, but it's still up to you to trust and believe. And have faith that you are an overcomer by the blood of the lamb and by the word of your testimony. If you don't believe that, how is others going to believe? That's something to think about, you are an overcomer by the blood of the lamb and by the word of your testimony. You gotta believe it first before you can get anybody else, and for the word to be active and quick in your life to be shown. Amen, come back next Thursday, um, February twenty-eighth, seven P M Eastern Standard Time, I will be your prayer facilitator. Then come back and join on Friday, us us, I'm saying September, February. February, next week is February eighth, I will be your prayer facilitator. February ninth, Friday, Elder Marshall Jenkins will be your Bible study instructor. And Saturday, February the tenth, it'll be Minister Rose Christine Jackson, your Bible study instructor. So we gonna be, it's gonna be a packed full week again, it's gonna be a full week again, so it's no excuse, come join us. We love you, good, good night, Sister Stacy, you know I love you to, I'm telling you, I love you to life. And I always thank you for your support, I feel you strongly, and and the Lord has a message for me to give to you privately and soon and due season. But I'm telling you, you 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 are such a blessing, you just don't know it yet. I may not have it mentioned, and I'm quite sure other people, you just, we just have and may have not said it. But your spirit is definitely a blessing, and your support is definitely received, and we love you so much, I love you so much. But um, thank y'all for joining me tonight, also again, for those of you out there, social media, those that may view this. Um, recording later, I just wanna mention this one thing, and that is. We as Soldiers on Fire for Christ, we're a partner with Saint Jude to raise a million dollars to help the children and the families, so that they can. Be, let the children be children, and so they ain't gotta worry about no bills, no medicine. No therapy sessions, no nothing, they ain't gotta worry about the cost of that. And we want the parents and the families to have that, they have an ease with that, so they can focus on, as long as they have their children. And helping them to be overcomers, they don't have to have that extra burden. And so, please partner with us, um, Saint Jude is accepting the minimum of five dollars, it's no excuse. God told me, everybody, yo, earth got five dollars, everybody can sacrifice that, no excuse. And so you can go on any of the leadership page, or you can come over to Soldiers on Fire for Christ and see the link as well, click on the link. It's gonna open right up, show you all the amounts, but then if you wanna put a different amount, you can. And the money goes straight to Saint Jude, cuz the moment you hit to send it off. He is going to Saint Jude, they gonna send you, I mean, it's quick too, quick, they gonna send you a quick email thanking you. For your donation, Soldiers on Fire for Christ, we get it, and the reason if some of you are wondering why we constantly say that, or most, you hear most of the leaders, they reiterate it in their own way. Because we know most of you has been spiritually raped when it come to finances. Some of you sat on the leaders that spiritually raped you, and they lied to you about tithing. Some of you have given your life savings, and guess what, God didn't say do that. And so we are being very transparent over here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ to let you know. That this vision came from God, so I'm not even worried about meeting the goal, cuz we're going to, cuz God said it, cuz that is, this is what. He put in me as well as in the rest of the leaders, and this is what we believe. So we ain't, we ain't, we gonna meet the goal, but we can meet it quicker with your help, but I want you to do it from a cheerful heart. I don't want you to give your five dollars, like thinking, I'm just gonna give my five dollars, cuz it's the right thing to do, well, it is a right thing to do. But I want you to do it because you agree with God, and now it becomes a God thing. You doing it because you really want to do something to help one of God's little children, one of God's little creation that can't help themselves right now. Cuz God wants a cheerful giver, he don't wanna, he don't want you giving grungedly, or huh, they keep on saying, I'm just gonna get. No, that's not impressive to God. You should give because, first of all, because you wanna give, because God is asking through us. And not only that, it ain't for us, it's for the little children. We got our money, we got our stuff straight, you see what I'm saying? God is working on all of us, we, ain't none of us sleeping in no bridges, thank you, Jesus. Ain't none of us is sleeping on no porches, thank you, Jesus, we all got nice warm beds. Amen, so we, I ask and implore you, and you can give as many times to help us to reach the goal. You may can give once a month, um, once every other week, just stay committed to whatever the amount that you choose that you wanna give. So please check out the um, link on my page, Apostle Robin Riley page, Elder Marshall Jenkins page. Brother Bud Dillon page, Minister Isaiah Robinson page, Minister Vossetta Simmons page. As well as Minister Rose Christine Jackson page, and in the group Soldiers on Fire for Christ, our page, it is, it is advertised. There's no reason why you cannot donate any amount to help save a life, a child's life. See, when you have, and it's, and when you can give to the least of us, you see what I'm saying? See, God looks at the heart. Some of you, and can I, can I say this, and I, well, I don't care if people get offended, but I'm gonna say it like this. Some of you take care of dogs better than you take care of children. I said it, some of you take care of your pets better than you'll take care of child, that's something for you to think about. And we're just asking for five dollars. I said, God, you, okay, I said it, and he told me, that's real talk. Some of you will take care of an animal better than uh, taking care, to give up five dollars, cuz some of y'all spend a lot on y'all pets. I'm just saying, amen, so let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, for this time, we thank you so much for your presence. You are always everywhere, I thank you for being in the presence of everyone that was in the virtual classroom, you were in their homes, you were sitting right beside them. You were working behind the scenes in all of our lives, and we are so, we just so thank you so much for it. We thank you that you do not rob us of your time, and God, we're never gonna rob you of our time. We are willing, cuz we are committed and in a relationship, and we thank you for linking us together. And having us to strive to stay committed and faithful to one another, so we can continue to edify and strengthen one another. And so as we leave this platform, because everything was made by you for you, and we thank you that you made it for us. We thank you, we truly appreciate how much you loved us enough to let Christ die, to give us a second chance, and give us chances. Over and over and over again to get it right, so that we can see ourselves as you originally sinned us, and so we thank you for that, God. And so, Lord, as we are about to leave each other, far as on this platform, but we never leaving each other spiritually, because you connected us spiritually. And I thank you for every life under the sound of my voice, every life in Soldiers on Fire for Christ, every leader, every member, every partner. Their family and every extension that is connected unto them, Lord, continue to penetrate, Holy Spirit continue to penetrate within them. Drawing them closer unto you, so that they can always walk out and be what you created them to be, and not with the world, or people think that they should be in the name of Jesus. So as we all go about our, our rest of our afternoon, evening, or morning, or wherever they at, and with social media doing. Let us take the word to heart, Lord God, but also those of us that are, where we resting, Lord. Lord, we come to you resting with a clean heart, and Lord, anything in us, mind, body, and spirit, even while we speak, while we're sleeping, that is not pleasing in your sight, remove it. Because if you give us tomorrow, we wanna be better than what we was the day before, we wanna make better decisions, Lord God, that is pleasing unto you. And we give you all the praise and honor for it, and we just love you so much, we love you, I, I mean, we just love you to the limit. We love you beyond the limit of our abilities. And so just continue to help each and every one of us grow in you. And help us however you want us to help others and our family members, and bring them right into the presence of you. And we praise you, and we honor you for this, and we thank you, and we don't take a calling on our lives lightly. And we praise, we love you again, Lord God, we can't stop telling you, we love you enough, and we give you all glory and all the honor, and all the praise for it, in Jesus mighty and awesome name, and everyone say, amen, amen.